Thanks for coming, we'll start the meeting with the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks again for coming out tonight, everybody, we'll start with approval of the agenda, additions, deletions, or rejections. I have one addition under the attorney's report, Dodge County ICE Arena Agreement. And that's a follow-up for the contract we had sent back to them the last time, and they've sent it back, so we have some more discussion.
Dan, and I think would like to add a description on your new business?
Yeah.
About the flashing pedestrian crosswalk signs at the West Crosswalk on 15th Street, coming from the middle school side to the high school side.
Okay, under new business, slide number one. Can you see anything else that you can see? Dan?
No, that's it.
Wait.
No, sir.
On favor of the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Pos, motion carries. Visitors to the council. We need to call-
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
Yeah, consent agenda. Everything's there, there, we're gonna have to, I would like to move to D, Casey's General Store 3.2 Beer License, I'll sell to new business number two.
To H2?
Yep, H2.
Could I suggest it change to the minutes from the August 14?
Certainly can.
Minute, uh, evening.
What would you like to suggest?
On the last page, under attorney, it says that, in the second sentence, under that Dodge County Fair Agreement, it says that I provided a copy of the updated agreement to the ICE Arena Supervisor. I didn't actually send him a copy of the agreement. I left him a message and asked for some input. Keep that with it. I, he, he didn't actually, it's a small change, but I wanted it to be accurate.
Anything else? Entertainer motion to approve a consent agenda as amended.
I'll make the motion.
Lonnie, do you have a second?
Second.
Wait, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pos, motion carries. Visitors to the council. We're gonna call Liza, correct? Liza is our consultant firm that is helping us with the hiring of the city administrator. So everybody has that, she has sent the council a packet, so she's gonna just ask if anybody has any questions, so we can discuss that. The big questions are gonna be, you know, the job description, the salary range, and then the dates as far as the follow-up times that we need to all be available for the interview, because they're actually gonna put that right in the packet, so we'll go ahead and get her on the line now.
Do you want me to come down?
Yeah. This is not like the phone I use.
You can be on the here really well.
Good evening, Mr. Liza.
Good evening, Liza, Mayor McKern here with the Caston City Council, we have you on speaker at the public meeting at this time.
Wonderful, good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Thank you for being available, I know you're going on vacation soon, correct?
Yes, I apologize for the double booking, so I regret that I can't be there, but I am looking forward to seeing you all at your next, well, you mean on October 23rd, where you will select your finalists. But yes, I am prepared to walk you through the next few steps here.
Okay, so why don't we let you go ahead and start, and then we'll see if we have questions from there.
Sounds wonderful, so tonight I'll just kind of walk you through, I'll have you review several items, and then after you have a chance to review these items, then I'll ask for the council to make a motion, just at the end, authorizing DDA to advertise for the city administrator position. So last week, just to provide a little background for everybody in the room, I forwarded a packet of information to the council, and within that packet was a copy of the community and position profile, salary information, salary range information from the League of Minnesota Cities, a job description, and my review of that, as well as a proposed search timeline. And it's that community position profile, that's the first item that we will review. You'll notice, council, that a lot of that information we were able to get from the city, and through other research methods, and then a lot of, or a lot of our conversations that we had on that day I came out to meet with each of you, as well as your staff, will be reflected in the last three pages. You'll see the desired attributes, as well as goals and priorities. So I would imagine you have an opportunity to review this over the last week, and I have my red pen with me, so I really wanted to make sure that you highlighted some areas that maybe, I, maybe were not an accurate reflection, because this will go out and be advertised nationally, regionally, statewide, so that those that aren't familiar with the community or the position will have a really good feel for who you are. So I am ready if you have any changes.
Okay, so does it may have any changes on the community education opportunities on that first page?
No.
And Liza, overall, in just my opinion, as I read through this, I think you nailed a lot of this, about maybe our comprehensive plan helps with that as far as some of the information too, so. Anything on the second page, recreational activities? It hits everything that pretty much goes on in town. Third page, healthcare, economic vitality, and housing. And then the organization.
The structure, I'll just make a comment, we talked, I believe, the last council meeting about having some sort of a structure set up like this, but in the chain of command, where this appears to be more lateral, as to whether, I, I know this is just for the city administrator advertisement, but-
Right, not the county?
Not, yeah, not the county. We wanna, we wanna change it to city administrator.
Yes, yes, I keep that.
But I just wonder if it should reflect our chain of command. So it goes from city administrator to finance director to, as I understand it, now the police chief is third in line, as to whether we should restructure this or save it for a later date.
Do you think, Liza, that's gonna be, I mean, we got the organizational structure here, do you think the chain of command would be something pertinent in this document, or would that be something for us just to set, and then that's just the way it is?
So I know that we were running into space issues here, so trying to show an accurate reflection of, I guess of how I interpreted the structure as, how we laid it out here, but no, I, I think if you are to make changes, and if it has been approved by the council already, we should reflect that in this document. Because we want those that are applying for this document to get the most accurate reflection of what they're walking into.
Perfect.
There was only one other thing on this page, and I don't know if it's a distinction with a difference or not, that it's a volunteer fire department, and this kind of makes it sound like it's a full-time, like Rochester, in the, in the last paragraph above the bold organizational structure.
Yeah, it just says 29 firefighters.
Right.
And so would you prefer the term to be, and the volunteer fire department is staffed by 29 firefighters, is that what you're thinking?
I think it's more accurate that way.
Okay, yep. I will add that. And then as far as the organizational structure, is there, I guess, what changes would you like me to make, I just wanna make sure I'm clear on that.
I think the organizational structure as there is accurate, it's just more of what's the chain of command per our ordinance, yeah. Do we have that?
Well, I, I, I think, you know, the, so for space, you've kind of got these two lines, which are really all one line, because they're all department heads, I think it's when you have an absence of the city administrator, that that other information comes into place, I'm not sure you need it here. Because on a daily basis, that's, that's not how it works unless the administrator's gone.
So it's more of a line of succession type idea, as opposed to chain of command?
Maybe, yeah, but like I say, if anything, all of these would be on the same line.
And I know we just ran into this last week, because the police chief is gone-
Yep.
And Charlie was, happened to be gone-
That's right.
And then you were gone, and you said, "Tag, you're it," and I'm like, wow. How's this supposed to work either, to complete the town? So, okay.
If nothing else, it's something we can note to anybody when we're interviewing, but it's, it doesn't affect how this is run right now, it's still gonna be the same, it's just only if the administrator is absent, or then there's a, a chain, per se, you know, then it goes, goes right to our finance director, but that's all written out in our ordinance. So, I don't know if it matters for this part, it's something we can tell them if it- I use that, this is for the purpose of hiring the city administrator, so whether it's pertinent for this application or not, I, I think we need to address this, but maybe this isn't the appropriate avenue in which to address it.
To do like this, but we still need to address it as a council, so they come in.
Yeah, I think so.
I agree with that. So I leave that, change the county to city, and then add volunteer on the fire department.
Okay, sounds great, noted.
Okay, budget information on the next page. Anything to look up? Some soft provisions?
Yeah.
Administrator core duties.
Those were just pulled from the job description, so that, you'll see that as a duplication.
And then administrator, desired administrative attributes, one page there.
These came from my discussion with each of the council members and staff, so please let me know if, if something in here is not quite accurate.
Okay, anything on that, anybody?
No.
And then the projects and goals.
Is the one, two, three, four, fifth bullet up from the bottom, states as electric utility supervisor, is that correct title? Don't know that.
It should be as, electric supervisor, supervisor. Those are not the electric, it's sort of supervisor.
Well, it, um, the city needs an appointee to CMTA, and then we have an alternate, who is the electric supervisor, so there might be another way to say that.
Sure.
We should let them know they will become an active member of CMTA.
Did you get all that, Liza?
I was gonna say, should I remove the first, you know, the words before the first comma there, and just say, become an appointed active member of CMTA?
Yeah, that would be more accurate.
Okay, sounds good.
Anything else? Position announcement, the next page. And so the applications are all gonna come to you, correct, Liza?
They will come to me, if anybody contacts you or city staff, you would just direct them to me.
Okay, perfect, that's my next question. Any questions on this at all?
Is the minimum qualification pulled from the job description also?
Yes.
It is, yes.
You have the two highlighted suggested additions in the job description for minimum qualifications?
I, so we added them, or I added them as desired qualifications, so first of all, we could add those desirable qualifications within that job advertisement there, and then the question would be, would you want me to also add desirable qualification, which would include strong planning background and experience working with an electric utility? But it wouldn't be minimum qualifications, so I'll make sure that that's clarified.
That would be good.
Yeah, yeah, I would add them. Oh, yeah.
Okay, wonderful, noting that as well.
Anything else on that page? Okay, and then you get into the, our standard job description for all the city employees here, which was also on three or four pages before that, was all just broke down in different areas. And then we get down to the schedule.
Okay, so, yes, so just backing up just a tad, the salary range is advertised as one hundred and five thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars to one hundred and twenty-eight thousand two eleven. Included in your packet, information from the League of Minnesota Cities, through that most recent salary survey, that information is submitted by the cities themselves, I simply include that information, just so you can see where you stack against other communities similar in size, and they also included some communities that have an electric utility. Just wanted to note that I feel that you are well-placed, I know that you probably put a lot of money into your compensation classification studies, so just to leave that information is there to show you that, I feel that this is a really attractive position, or that salary range is there. So just wanted to know that that is the salary range that will be placed in this advertisement, unless anybody has, unless the council decides different. And then the job description, I also saw that that was recently revised, 2018 at books, I do feel that it reflects the modern job description and the duties of a city administrator today. I did make those two changes, but it sounds as if the council's in favor of adding that under desirable qualifications. And then the timeline, as you saw in your packet, it had four highlighted dates in there, you've already accomplished the first two. The next date that would require council attendance is October 23rd, which is a normal council evening, that's where you will select your finalists. And then the only other date that I needed council approval on is that of the interview day or days. I received feedback from three council members regarding their schedules, so that's why I selected November 12th and 13th. I still, I think there may be a conflict with council member Sarah, if I understand, on November 12th, so if the council is open to it, or desires a two-day process, we can try and minimize council interactions, so that there aren't any on the, the November 12th, so that council member Sarah doesn't feel that she's missing out, and then put a big chunk of those activities on November 13th.
The, the only conflict that I had on November 12th is a library board meeting at 6:00 PM. If I need to.
And the reason I need council approval on these dates is because these are the dates that will be advertised in the process, and those that are serious candidates, they will be able to know going in that they need to reserve the dates, or dates of 12th and 13th, reserve them, set aside for the interview.
Okay, so the time, so you're pretty much thinking, because we have a normal council meeting on the night of the 13th, is our normal meeting night, so are you talking during the day on the 12th and 13th for these interviews? Or what, what hours of the day are you looking at?
Yep, the interview days that we have reserved are the 12th and the 13th, and then we'll walk, when I come and meet with you on October 23rd, you as a council will help me design how you want your interview day or days to go. So we'll, we'll, we'll figure that out, we'll walk into the weeds of that tonight. You have some time to think about how you want that to work out, and it, the interview day or days do not need to fall on a council meeting night, because it will be advertised as a council meeting anyway, because you will all be in one room through the interview process. So we'll advertise that extended period of time as an open council meeting anyway.
Okay, and then you have done making a decision on the 15th, which is a Friday, we have to call a special meeting and schedule that? Is that public?
No, that should be the 13th, so I'm gonna change that here.
So the night of the 13th, okay, so the interview's 12th and 13th, and then talk about it on the 13th, and make our decision that night?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
So if there are no conflicts, and with the noted changes in the profile, this is where I think it's appropriate time to make a motion, authorizing the changes that have been made, and authorizing DDA to advertise the position.
So are any other questions for Liza?
Uh, nothing, I got one question for Liza, but nothing that'll affect the motion.
So do I, who won't affect emotion either? No, Lonnie, none? No, okay, all right, thank you, Liza, for that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the search packet and timeline as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Stand on a second.
Second.
Thanks, Mel, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pos, motion carries, and a question for Liza, Duane?
All right, Liza, under the job description, the qualifications, do you typically see the years of experience being flip-flopped, where we've got bachelor's degree with two years of experience, and yet we have a master's degree with four years of experience? Those years of experience seem to be flip-flopped.
So desirable qualifications is different than your minimum qualifications, your minimum qualifications, you're asking for at least a bachelor degree with two years of experience. Desirable, if you could get the perfect candidate, that, you know, it's the personality of your organization, and they could walk in with a master's degree, and they could walk in with four years of municipal experience, that's what you would be excited about, those are the things you're, those are your desirables, but no, this is not unusual, that it's laid out the way that it is.
Okay, thank you.
No, you have something else?
No. Just the one question I had, is will we get an updated schedule with the new dates?
Yes.
So we can make sure we get it in our calendars with the right dates.
Yep, I, from now on, I will send out a weekly update, just to keep you all posted on how we're doing in the advertising, how many number of candidates we have, once we've, the closing date has appeared, I'll let you know how, the number of candidates that you, semi-finalists you have after we've screened through it, so I'll keep you up to date each week. Even tomorrow, I'll send out an update after we advertise, just to give you a list of all the different places where we have advertised. So, and you are welcome to email me or call me at any time if you have questions as well, but yes, you will receive an update, updated schedule as one of my updates to you.
And you'll walk us through when the time comes in October, that, you know, everybody who applies is confidential until they're chosen as a finalist, you'll walk us through, make sure we follow.
Yes. Yes, yes.
And we, if we get emails from, do we reply to that, or not copy everybody, so?
Yeah, if you have communications with Liza individually, or she sends something out to everybody, an update, you have a question for her, just respond to Liza, don't reply to all, so we don't violate the open meeting.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, correct.
Perfect, any other questions for Liza? All right, thank you for getting this done for us, look forward to working with you, and have a good vacation.
Yes, thank you, all have a great meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks, Liza.
Thank you.
And just so the pay scale, just for everybody, that is the exact pay scale that we have for step 20, or grade, wherever we have step grade 20 in our pens, it's not outside of that. All right, next, we have Karen Charme with SOMTRA.
Good evening, thank you for having me, um, sorry, oh my gosh. Allergies.
Well, we like, we're happy to see you.
Yeah. Sorry, um, the reason I'm here tonight is, um, to get the approvals for the Small Cities Application Grant that has been awarded, so, um, in your packet is a list of about 16 documents, um, that are required for the approvals, the required approvals to get the release of funds. In the past, I've gone through each document individually, or we've answered questions, it's up to the council on how they wanna handle that.
So, we have some questions, we had some dialogue today, and I'll let Melissa start.
As usual, anyone's got all questions, sorry.
All right, all right.
I noticed in this that there are a lot of things that the state is requiring us to do in terms of implementing policies and procedures. Is there a suggested policy, a, specifically the ones required of the police force, and the one required of the drug pre-works on?
Yep, everything that, so item three, um, item six, um, fair housing, those are recommended policies, and we use what they've provided, so those are included in your packet.
And how, there seems to be almost like a training component to these things, and my background is as an OSHA attorney, so I'm kind of, I get, I get a little neat when I see things that are required training and required policy provisions, because I know that's where if you're gonna get in trouble, it's that.
Right, so in my 15 years of doing this, we've adopted the same things and updated things as they, as, they may have a tweak here and there, we've updated them, and we're using the most current request, or recommended, um, documents, so.
So as our, the committee representative, you-
So your administrative contract?
Yep.
It, kind of the grant agreement is between the state and the city, but the administrative contract turns that responsibility over to SOMTRA. If they come after you, they're gonna, you're gonna come after us.
Right.
Is how we turn that.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Thank you.
So there's, by adopting this, there's nothing more we have to do?
You're turning over all that responsibility, all the reporting, all the file compliance, all that to us. The funds will throw, flow through the city, that you, as a fiscal agent, we administer all that, you guys aren't making decisions on who's getting what money, we're making that decision as your administrator.
Right, so as far as like our employee handbook, doesn't have to be updated to-
They're not gonna ask for your employee handbook.
Okay, so you just have to have this between us and the city?
Yep, and that, they'll look at these documents, so upon approval tonight, I will send everything via Adobe Sign, which is similar to DocuSign, so it makes it easy, we will keep all those files on your behalf for the required retention period.
Any other questions for Karen?
And just maybe to help put you at ease, and our, we've been doing this since 1987 as an organization, we have never had an audit finding, so, just, just for reputation kind of thing, just so, to put any mind at ease, so.
And it's, it's more just trying to make sure that we're satisfying our obligations, so if there is any HR training or anything that needs to take place, just making sure that that component-
Yep, and I, I understand all that.
Um, so now we have a choice, there's no more questions. Do we wanna go through and do each motion and resolution individually, or we can do a blanket motion to adopt all 16 at one time?
If there's no questions, I suggest we make it a blanket.
Good, okay, so, and I, and I feel much better about it now, after knowing that-
Yeah.
That we don't have to go tell the police chief about this, so.
Um, and then once, um, just so the mayor knows, and Linda, I will send this off to you, probably when I get back to the office, and Linda can fill in resolution numbers, and you can sign all electronically, you don't have to-
Okay.
-um, sit down and do all that, and then I can send out final versions. If that's okay with you guys?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement as presented by Karen's name.
I'll make that motion.
Lonnie, do you have a second?
I'll start with that.
Thanks, Dan, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pos, motion carries.
And then, can I just make one other comment, the environmental review is being completed, it is, um, there were some new requirements, so instead of it being about 200 and some odd pages, it's about 250 now, so we have to do a lot of different things, like railroads and all that, we have to look at, so we're still in the process of finalizing that, and I'll have a document for you to sign, um, once that's completed and we are through the review process, so there's a couple, they changed it so that we have to go through the review process a couple times, just so that we don't have any, um, missing links, I guess, with HUD, because it is federal money, so I just wanted to make you aware of that as well.
Thanks, Karen, for your time.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it, thanks, and drive safe, everyone, all night. Joe Middlestead. Joe Middlestead.
The reason I'm here is because I would like to understand, try and understand. It's kind of hard for me to understand sometimes how complicated life can get with people. But all I want to do at my place, at one time it was a duplex. Two people lived there, myself. I've lived there the longest of anybody so far, since that house was built. It was built in fifty-four, fifty-five. In fifty-seven, I remember going into that house. My boy scout likely lived there. I'm familiar with the house from my backyard till right now. But anyway, way too much complication. All I want to do is get rid of my meters, my rental unit meters. What's so hard about that? What's so complicated, somebody to... Take my meters and go with them. Take them where they belong. They don't belong on my house anymore. I'm not using rental electricity anymore. I'm not using rental water anymore. Get the stuff gone. What's so hard about that?
Have you talked with Dave?
It was easy. It was easy when I moved in there. I mean, it just seemed easy. Boom, you know? But now I want to get rid of the stuff. I don't need it. Why do I need to pay two bills?
I understand. I guess I'm...
Yeah.
It's a person who has a preferred...
It seems more complicated than it is. I guess I need a building permit to get rid of my meters. Where does all this stuff, a permit to get rid of my meters? They're not my meters. Take them and go. Why do I need a permit?
Have you talked with Dave?
Dave who?
The wastewater treatment or the water person, or Charlie? Whatever. Public Works Director? Okay.
I'm not sure what the history is.
Yeah, I guess I...
What's the story?
I can't give you any. I don't know what...
It's... Why would it be so complicated? I mean, it was not complicated to get them hooked up. They were eager to throw them on my building, you know?
I know if you have two meters for water...
It was a duplex when I moved in.
If you have two meters, you want to remove one, we have... You got to make sure that it's capped off and properly, so there's only one meter running everything. So we got to make sure it's plum proper, so I don't know if there's a plumbing permit for that or not. I'm sure there is. And then electric would be the same. If you're going to have two electric meters, you're going to take one off. To put one back on, you got to make sure electrician has wired everything into the one meter. And so that would...
Yeah. I've contacted him, and he was there and left, and I've never seen him since.
So I'm sure that's part of it.
But I think that's what the permits are for, just to make sure everything is wired properly.
Plum property.
Plum properly. That's all it is. It's just to make sure everything is right. That's all it's for.
Okay. No problem with that. Now, one more thing. The water key out front.
Curb stop.
Curb stop. Why has it never been fixed?
What do you mean, fixed?
Okay. I'll give you a little history on my place. It goes back to the turn of the century. Carriage... At one time, there was a barn in my backyard there. I don't think the house I live in was there. That property belonged to the house on the south or the house on the north or something. But anyway. As it goes up through the years, somewhere this property got sold off. Okay. Antiquated water distribution system in the city. There used to be three water lines running underneath my driveway on the south side. Three water lines. I found them by using the binding rods.
Switching sticks?
I knew they were there. Okay. Just... I moved in there about the same time a fellow moved in on the south side there. And he had new water line run in at that time, for whatever reason I don't know, into his house that came in the front. And so one of his had went down my driveway to the east and then went, made a right angle turn and went into the basement there. So that one's been laying dead there all these years. Another one went all the way over to the corner on... I live on Manorville Avenue. Another one went all the way over to the corner on First and First over there. Another one went over to the Smith House, which isn't... The Smiths don't live there anymore. But...
That's the way the water... We have a council member...
Okay. But there's no Eastmans or Rightaways on my abstract?
No, but at one time, a lot of times, there was no... There was no water main on Manorville.
Why wasn't that stuff noted on the abstract? As a Rightaway or an Eastman?
Back then? I'm not sure.
So when I found out that stuff was there, I came in and I talked to the city administrator at that time, and I said, you know, I said, "If something should ever happen here, you're not going to tear my driveway up." Okay, now here's where I start to get angry now. Out in my... Out in, on the left side of my approach out front, the shut-off was for... Evidently, it must have somehow that shut-off fed two places down there. They would never tell me where they went. They would never tell me where the water lines went. Why they would never tell me, I don't know. I guess they didn't want me to know. Simple as that.
They might not have known.
They knew where they went. They always kept saying, "The guy that had the information, he's gone." When that one guy retired, you know, what, he walk around with that stuff in his hip pocket all the time? You know, there must have been records here. You know, this is how it was all taken here at one time. Kind of the buddy-buddy system, and everybody kind of knew everybody, and they knew this guy was doing that. But evidently, there's no records of it ever. Okay, so they come to replace... What happened was there was a water leak down here a couple years ago. I came in and I told the city administrator, I said, "The water's leaking out there." You know, water should be a valuable commodity, wouldn't you think? The water out of your water, we're pumping it up there. Then we got it distributed out. It's a value commodity, water is. Drinking water. And so here we were wasting water out there all the time. It had been going like that for two years or more, and I kept bugging them and bugging them. Pretty soon, in the worst day of the winter, of course, the very worst day of the winter, it got so bad that it pushed my approach up out there that far. And I come... He says, "Well, is there a gusher coming out?" What difference if there's a gusher coming out? It should have been fixed three years ago or whenever, you know? So now they come in the wintertime to fix this. Huh? Okay. Now, the next thing they're thinking, they're going to get me to pay for all this. Wrong. The water leak was out under Highway fifty-seven. The guy had to crawl in a tunnel underneath the highway to get to that water leak and fix it. I ain't going to pay for it. It ain't my water. It goes to somebody else's place. Okay? So then comes to put the approach back in, they wanted me to pay for the concrete. Uh-uh. Why would I pay for the concrete if it was dug up to get to your water meter? That doesn't belong to me. You know, there are a lot of phony stuff that, you know, it's... There's no simplification to anything. It either is or it isn't. You know, there ain't no beating around the bush or lying about stuff. Simple as that. You know, either... And it's like, who owns that water shut-off out front of the place there? Out in the... Towards the street there. Who owns that? I don't own that? Evidently not. If water was to be shut off at my place right now for some reason, if I had a big leak in the house or something, for whatever reason, the water couldn't be shut off. It doesn't work. And he tells me that if it was to be fixed now, I'm going to be paying for it. He said in three years, they're going to tear that all up out there, the highway out there, Highway fifty-seven. Then they'd fix it, three years from now. So from now until three years, I'm kind of sitting on an edge there, ready to, you know, if the water leak happens, I'm screwed.
I can't tell you what's happened in the past. There's a lot of lines that come off side streets that aren't the right way. But once they go through with fifty-seven, they're going to correct a lot of problems. They're going to find a lot of problems, but we can't...
That new street was put in over on First there, years back. The city never put their foot down and said, "You people have to hook up to this water." That could have been done then, when that street was done over there then. Each one of them homeowners had to pay an average of about forty-five hundred dollars, again, for somebody to come in the wintertime and dig your yard up and get them water. The hookups were over there on that street. Never done. Nobody ever put their foot down. Lack of communications, lack of desire, or those people don't have the money to spend. Well, it should have been done then, you know? And the people that are living there after the fact, after that should have been done, they're the ones that are paying the bill. You know, it's always putting the bill off on somebody else, you know? That key out there should be a simple thing in the street there, shouldn't it, you think? I don't know. That shut-off.
It's unholded.
Yeah. They tell me it doesn't work. If it was out front of one of your places, it'd be fixed just like that, wouldn't it?
No.
Yeah.
Or just like everybody else.
Yeah.
Well, Joe, thanks for your comments. So we can work on going forward. We can't fix all this stuff from the past.
Yeah. 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 I really like it.
You really? I'm just, you know, we'll work on it.
But the stuff starts to build up to the point, like these two people over there, they got screwed, you know, when a few years back. That isn't that long ago when that street was tore up and redone over there. That foot should have been put down now, and then people should have been hooked up to it. Now, the people that come after them owners at that time, they're paying the bill. It doesn't make it right. And it's like, right now, I've lived at that place right there for a better part of my life, a bigger part of my life. And, I mean, the house was built in fifty-four or fifty-five, and now here years later, if somebody wants to move in, they got to start doing this stuff that should have been done years ago, fixed. You know, that's not right.
So back to your original question about what to do on the house. I would get back with Dave, or Charlie, Dave, both. But when you have to apply for a building permit, the only time you have to apply for a building permit, which you do if you put the new water meter in, is if we have to pay to have it inspected. That's the state law that we have to have inspected. That's what we charge the building permit for, because we get charged for the inspection fee. So that's basically just a pass-through to pay for that inspection. Other than that, if there's no inspection, there is no building permit fee. So just to answer that question, the only time there's a building permit fee that has to be paid is if we have to pay CMS to inspect it.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Appreciate your time.
Yep. Thanks, Joe. Appreciate it. Okay. On to the mayor's report. General... I'm going to just sneak something in here for Kimberly. Smith is here, who didn't want to get up the podium, but they left some stuff on here in front of you. With a picture there. And what I want to ask is that in this case here, that we get the Smiths together with Brandon and Farley and possibly Nancy. I did have a chance to talk with Brandon about this a little before the meeting, about the Smith property area. That there might be some things that we can do in the meantime while we're waiting on the application we have with disaster relief before we can get that application approved. So I've got contact information here. Brandon will get with you sometime. If you guys get together, they can look at it and see if we can do some kind of quick something there on that sort of thing. General budget discussion. So a copy of the budget was provided for everyone. I believe. Everybody get that? The electronic to paper? I got mine. I always sit a tree, because I like to scribble it all up and post it forward eventually. Nancy knows that. So really, it's just a matter of if anybody has any high-level questions for Nancy tonight. Basically, it was to give you a couple weeks to digest this, go through line by line. Have any questions for Nancy, to get them to her. We do have... Charlie's here tonight with Public Works, so if there's any questions specifically for Charlie, on anything you saw in the Public Works area. And we do have here with Electric too, if there's anything specifically for Electric. So do you guys, as department heads, do you have anything to point out or give council, "Hey, this is in there. We really need one to..."
If there's anything outside of what we talked to Nancy before.
Okay. Charlie's name?
Public Works, you know, something for the council to be aware of is the equipment's getting older, and we're having some major fixes right now. We just had a loader repaired for fifty-three hundred. We've been here twice and looked at it greater, and now they want to haul it across to look at it. Sander, we're going to try to get a blacksmith to see if he can fix it. The bottom is rotten out of it. Some of that old equipment we got to look at, start to replace it.
And I don't have... Tom, I might have... Remember, was there anything in there for capital for Public Works? Just a general capital number? Anything specific or...
Within the utility fund, such individual line items and general fund, it's kind of moved for general purchases, whatever needs to arise.
The other thing I was going to point out on the Public Works in general was last budget cycle, we approved a part-time person. And I see that there's something in here to take that person to a full-time person from a part-time person. So just as I go through the budget, you always look for the big numbers and the big increases. But I'll just say, from my personal experience, I have not talked to Charlie about this yet, but just as we've seen what's happened over the last eight months of our experience here this year with snow, the weather, the cold, the rain, the more rain, 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 whatever else. I mean, there's just stuff that's not getting done like it needs to be. Not that anybody's slacking or doing it. I don't think anybody's sitting around doing nothing. But as we've added the subdivisions, we've added the stuff, plus the workload that we have, I'll just encourage everybody that at the next meeting that we look hard at leaving that kind of full-time. You just... And we've had just some bad luck as far as, you know, folks moving on, and we haven't been able to replace them, so then we're short a couple people that way. So we just... I think there's... Just the things that these folks have done over the last two months also. We can use some extra help there. Any questions for Nancy in general? I mean, we look at what's on here with what we have on there. You know, we see the increase, you know, with thirteen point seven as of right now, if everything was approved as it is. That's a pretty big number. We're obviously going to look and see where we can make some adjustments and do some things to get that down. So when we come back on September eleventh, we'll approve the preliminary budget at that time. Whatever that number is cannot go higher than that. And then in December, when we approve the final, we'll approve the final. So the assumptions in here are for, if you look at the assumptions page, you know, four percent for health insurance increase. That's kind of the best guess right now. We aren't going to know until December. We have the union negotiations coming up here in October, November, so we have just kind of the basic assumptions we've had for years in there that that's what it is. So we won't know those hard numbers until probably late November, early December. So as we think about that when we do the preliminary budget, so just to keep in mind, about thirty-one thousand, three hundred dollars is one percent. So every one percent of thirty... If eleven goes up one percent, that's thirty-one thousand. So if there's no more questions, okay, Nancy?
Well, only because he's here tonight. Like the supervisor Nelson was asked to come tonight to address a question about, because we have a job offering out there for two line workers. So this is the opportunity to ask. Otherwise, we'll be moving forward with hiring two.
I don't remember what the question was. We approved, hired two, right?
Yeah, but there was still a question as to...
I think at the time, some of us only thought there was one position going to be open, and then it became two because of the regulations.
And part of the two, I think, was just the fact that, you know, doing... Anytime that we put any, we want to hire somebody, or we would love somebody here to ask questions right now.
And that's for the oversight.
But no, but I mean, it's just, it's something we want to start. That's it.
Oh, yeah. And I guess just to add to that, you know, one of the questions is when it came to two, it was a single sentence or a really short paragraph. I think the task of every department head is when an opening or there is a need for additional incremental increase or replacement, that we do a deep dive on, you know, where we're at, and just to provide the added justification on paper as to explain, you know, this is what we've got, rather than a two-sentence saying that one person's gone, I need to replace them. I mean, that doesn't tell me anything.
Well, that was me who had written that up too. That was me.
Yeah.
I had the reservation.
But I think this is for Charlie. This is for all the department heads, is that, you know, when there's a need for increase or a replacement, that we just do an internal review as to where we're at, why we need to replace it, and just add that justification down.
If I could just speak to that. The workload is definitely not decreasing in the city of Cassin. In the six and a half years I've been here, every summer gets significantly busier.
Yep.
And we're looking at starting three more subdivisions yet this year.
See, and that information would be great to have on paper, because we're making the decision, we're being watched on camera, making these decisions on very little information. So having that justification would be very beneficial.
Or anything we can take to a grumpy taxpayer who says, "Why are you spending this money?" And enable us to explain, "This is why." It's fabulous.
Absolutely.
It's just more for, we're trying to make it easier down the road for everybody. If it's just something we do every time, it's going to be easy for you and us.
Yep. So it's some expectation involved.
Perfect. Okay. Great. Thanks. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
So any questions or suggestions on the budget? Email. Get with Nancy before the next meeting. We'll bring back the budget the next meeting. Chop it up and approve preliminary. Okay. Number two on the mayor's report, lead memo. We got a memo, I think it's in everybody's packet, Senator Senjim was chosen for a recognition by the League of Minnesota Cities, and waited at his service to the various cities. Maybe so congratulate him on that, thank you for his help. That's all I have right now on the mayor's report. We'll keep going with the hiring of the city administrator, and thanks to Nancy for her extra time here the last few weeks. I know she's put some extra time into this, so appreciate it, thank you.
On top of the budget.
It's not all the time. We go on to new business. Number one, the item was added by council members, Ferris and Egler, flashing pedestrian crosswalk signs on Sixteenth and Fifth.
So, middle school orientation was today, and I parked at the high school and made my kid walk with me from high school to middle school, thinking, if nothing else, it's a good teaching opportunity as to why we use the crosswalks and sidewalks. On the way there, I noticed that there are flashing, you know, you push the button and it flashes so the drivers can see it, signs on the crosswalk that's on the east side of that intersection, which is the elementary school side. Elementary school kids are, believe it or not, a little bit better at paying attention when they're crossing the street than the middle school kids.
Or high schoolers.
And so, on the middle school side, there is no chance to push the button. And what they're gonna have to do, if they need to push the button, which they should, is go a few extra feet, cross Sixteen, and then cross up again on Fifth. So, we're making them cross twice, where there's already that lovely, delightful, tempting crosswalk painted on the street, but no flashers. And I didn't think it was a big deal until we were walking back. And I know nobody was ready for the traffic today, because if you don't have a kid in middle school or elementary school, you don't are aware that it's orientation day. But as we're walking back, we're on the middle school side again, there was a car on Fifth waiting to turn, a big car, that I couldn't see around. And so, we stepped into the intersection, because that driver acknowledged this, there was nobody headed east on Sixteen. However, there was a car going west on Sixteen that I couldn't see, and she couldn't see us, and we had to jump back quick, because even at thirty miles an hour, those cars are, you know, they're moving. So, if there is funds, or if we happen to have two more of those flashy light crosswalk things around that we could put in, I'm just bringing it up.
On the west side of crossing Sixteen?
On Fifth.
So, you want one on the east side and one on the west?
We have the order, and that'll be...
Part of the problem with that is, once we put in that new safer up to school bump off, the traffic page, which I thought they would pay more attention, they actually pay less attention, and the students get lost inside of it. It's, believe it or not, I mean, it was supposed to be better, but I've noticed that even when I walk in and drive down there, people will walk out and you don't see them right away, because you see the poles first.
Right.
The poles have actually become more of a hindrance than they were, you know, and I think that's why Mindot has allowed us to put that in to test it. It's actually made it harder, because people are looking at them and not looking at the students. I still like the bump off, I don't know if there's a way if you took the poles down. I know we just spent a lot of money putting them in.
But Dan, but no, none of the drivers have had a chance to really use those with kids around and get used to it.
This summer...
But there hasn't been the massive, you know, and the time of day that you're expected to look for massive herds of children.
Well, yeah, I know, it would be nice to have another light, I'm not there.
I was just bringing it up in case we just happen to have a spare couple.
And I don't know what the pricing is. I know.
We need two, right? Should we add a crosswalk to the west?
To the west. So, you need one on the north and south side of Sixteen.
I guess we need to decide what we're gonna do with that thing.
Yeah, just to give it more clarity of this and where what we've done at this point. So, we have a couple things in motion here. So, we did the Safe for Elsa School Planning Grant, and during that planning grant process, we acknowledged the fact that we only have the one crossing on the east side of Fifth, at Sixteenth Street. So, one of the recommended improvements was to install the second crossing that you're referring to. So, we in turn got the TAP grant, we secured the grants to do a bunch of different projects within that planning grant, and this was one of them. So, we are planning to install that portion in twenty-twenty-two as part of the TAP grant. That's the funding we secured from Mindot, having the school to pay for a portion of it. So, that would be going in in twenty-twenty-two if we did nothing and continued on the course we're going today. Now, with that said, to add, we could still do it and just spend that money differently in the TAP grant process, but I think those are about twenty-five thousand bucks a piece. They're really expensive, of course. But I say, well, when I say that, the things that changed, there was a patent on it, and then the DOT said, well, we're not gonna install, allow them anymore, because they're patented, so they've gone back in their patents, so I might have opened that up, I might have changed that, so something Charlie and I can come back to maybe report on the cost of them. But we did have twenty-five thousand budget in the TAP grant, that's actually replaced boltens, maybe it's half, or maybe we look at replacing boltens, something we can report back on. So, we did have this work in motion to have the second flasher. So, again, we'll take direction on which direction we want to do, report back on the cost, and maybe we install it sooner than twenty-twenty-two, and we can do that, of course.
I know it's expensive, but what's a life child worth?
I understand.
I mean, it would be nice to know if they've gotten less expensive, if there's...
Sure, so we can report back.
At what point do you guys see the need for a crossing guard there like we have on Mannerwell Avenue? I drive that every day, in the morning at the worst time, and in the afternoon when I'm running around doing the... And sometimes, and there's no excuse, but sometimes you see drivers lose patience, because you got all these kids looking down at their phones or their devices, and they're spread out about twenty feet apart. You can never go, because there's always a kid approaching the crosswalk.
Right, right.
It's just constant, they don't bunch up. And you're gonna get, as people get impatient, that's when dumb things happen, you gotta get impatient. Now, you got this something new, I mean, flashing lights on, which we'll do anything we can to keep it safe, but at some point, especially when we next year pave the road to the east, and there's gonna be even more cars going there, you potentially could have for that half hour, just as many cars on Sixteenth as you do Mannerwell Avenue. At what point do we work with the school and say, hey, we need to have a crossing guard attached?
Like in Pine Island, I know they, the school hires the crossing guard, it's through the school, and they cross, and they also use them to move the buses out, so the buses are, to move the track. So, that, you know...
Yeah, I mean, the whole corner, because you got the elementary school buses coming at a different, I mean, it's just the whole, middle school, everything, all of it, and just, I mean, I see it in the school, my wife and I just talk about their day, oh, school starts next week, you can used to go in and work much earlier or later, because you just don't wanna drive through there.
And everybody's gotten the mentality, I'm a pedestrian, so I have the right of way. So, they just, nobody stops, nobody looks, they just get crossing.
Mine even made that joke today, and I said, ah, yeah, but it's not much good after you get run over, Ken.
They're bigger than you are, is what I always told mine.
So, good discussion. So, how about we have you guys look into what the cost of those flashers are, because that's something we can do immediately, or as soon as we can get them, and see what the cost is, and then go from there.
Yep, and secondly, if you'd like, we do actually have a meeting set up at the school for some other things we have going on in the city. Thursday, September twelfth, which is what, two weeks from tomorrow, so I can look at scheduling with the school administrator, that discussion, if you so direct, myself and Nancy and Charlie to do that.
I would say at least... Even if they brought back, though, you know, what were they called when I was a kid?
Crossing guard.
Crossing guards, yeah. Kids begged to do that.
I begged. Well, and that's a program that they could set up through their SRO.
I don't know, just a lot of ideas to them to, just try to get, make it safer, not
As of now, there was posters coming out for the winter.
Yes.
Right.
Yes. It was...
Yeah, good luck, because they'll come out for you.
I noticed, I mean, they do, they did slow the traffic down, don't get me wrong. It's just I noticed now, and it'll be a training for the kids, but they don't pay as much attention, and you don't see them right away.
I think the kids think it's a state's of them.
Yes.
They walk right out to the edge of those, where they start even looking.
Yes.
The first ten years I was here, there was a cop parked out from the high school kind of near that intersection, that slowed people up.
And the buses are gonna have a tough time, because when those little poles weren't there, the hardcore...
They had a tough time.
They had a tough time making those corners, as there were cars, because cars pull, right now, people aren't stopping at the stop sign on Fifth. They're pulling out to the edge of those poles, which makes the visibility...
That is precisely why we can't see around that car.
So, it's a driver, kid, everybody education, and everybody thinks they can go further.
And when you meet with the school, can, and maybe I'm wrong, but can you see if there's any way they can put it into a bulletin to the students, reminding them what that zone is for? You know, the school sends out mass emails to the parents, they send them out to the kids, is it something they can just quick send out too, as another...
Walk kids out there some recess, show them. We're having safety training, we have safety class for our guys, and the gals that work for the city.
So, if you could add that to your discussion.
Yeah, they do have Fifth there, between the middle school and the... So, that's all we have, thanks for bringing that, Brandon. And Mel, thank you.
Thank you.
Number two, we have removed Casey General Store's three-point-two liquor license outsale, because it was brought to our attention that our ordinance says that the applicant is a corporation, all shareholders shall be a resident of the state. I believe that's a mistake in our ordinance. If it's not, it should be, because we've already issued liquor licenses to corporations that do not have all the owners that live in the statements, or none of the owners that live in the statements, so...
I guess that I think that perhaps those were issued prior to the ordinance being revised. It appears as though it was revised in April of eighteen.
Yeah, that's a mistake, we need to...
Correct that.
Correct that. So, how do we proceed?
Do you wanna just cable the application and bring it back again, and perhaps...
Because on the eleventh, because don't we have to have a public hearing to change the ordinance?
Yes.
So, can we call a public hearing for the next meeting to address this ordinance, to make the change? The only reason I'm asking is because there's no reason for us to hold up their business or our mistake, when we've already clearly set a precedent, and our ordinance was not intended to...
The one thing I will say about the ordinance is that, because the city has its own municipal liquor store, that may be why it's in there to...
Sure.
That's the only thing I'll say. And I, right off the top of my head, I'm not sure how much notice we need to provide to change the ordinance. Can I look into that and shoot Nancy an email?
Sure.
Maybe tomorrow, that she can distribute amongst you, and we can figure out when that, when to have that put back on the agenda.
Sure. So, I think the municipal liquor store is protected.
Well, I was gonna add, you know, there's been discussion of possible Michael Brewery, so I already approached Melanie about changing the language to open up our ordinance a little bit to allow those, even if things shouldn't happen right now, so we can incorporate maybe all of that in a change.
Right, yeah, because this, because the application itself defines that it's three-two only, and they can't sell the hard alcohol or the full-strength beer. That's to protect our liquor store. And we can do that through the application process versus the ordinance.
Yep. Do you wanna just call for a public hearing on that? We can schedule it later and take care of all of those requirements.
Yes. We'll call for a public hearing, ordinance one-hundred-and-ten-point-two-one. Thank you. Administrator's report.
Just a couple of things. One is, note the annual meeting of Compass, October tenth, if any of you are interested in going. It's always a very interesting presentation, along with dinner. Dan can share more with you about that as well, but just let us know if you'd like us to register you for that. Secondly, every year, we have a renewal of the energy agreement with some CAC, and that's, that's the program where they provide energy assistance. And it's a great program, they administer all of it, we receive the payments and apply them to the accounts, but we need to have the agreement approved by motion.
Any questions for Nancy on that? On the motion to approve? Thanks, Dan, all papers said aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks. Earlier this year, we received a refund for various revenues from Compass, for money saved and spent, which were no longer needed, and it's come up since then that we might have other uses for that. And we haven't, you know, when we reseeded it, it went right into electric. Well, here we are with another opportunity that I thought I'd asked before we actually reseeded it, in case council had other uses for it. As explained in the memo, they had been required on behalf of all of us to create a regulatory asset fund, which is no longer needed, so the monies were returned. Of that half of it, which was seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand, the board for Compass decided to use that to replenish some cash reserves that had been used, and that was last year. Well, the money has still been there, they set it aside for other possible uses or things that might arise, and they decided that it was time to just return those extra funds. So, the money has already come back to us in the form of a check. It was our share, which was evenly divided with the other utilities, was six-thousand five hundred. They did offset that with some miso charges. They had made some mistakes and were back charging, and they were kind of offsetting month to month, but they thought, well, this might be a good time to just net the difference. So, we do have a check of about forty-four thousand dollars, and I just wanted to open up that opportunity if you felt there was another designated use for it, otherwise, it will go into the electric fund.
I mean, I can think of twenty-five things off the top of my head. But I don't know, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed as to giving it back in the electric fund, because it seems that as we have more reserves in there, we kind of tap that for some of these other designated things as we go, which might become in part of the play with the budget this year. Maybe there's some equipment or something that we can, I mean, so, but I would say if we got that back to the electric fund, since we've kind of tapped that for a lot of money here lately.
And it's still always the possibility we can tap it.
We can, yeah.
Yeah, that's true, okay.
Anybody have anything specific they can think of? I mean, again, I have twenty-five things.
Well, just the latest was the demolition of a couple buildings.
Sure, so, let's, I'd say let's lay it there, we can always distribute that as part of the puzzle later.
Yep, that's right. Okay, so that actually is a good segue into the last item, which is the flood of properties. Now, we know about the one property on East Veterans Memorial Highway. We acquired it through tax forfeiture. The intention was ultimately to demolish it anyway, we were required to demolish it to be able to use it for parkland. But then, we found out, it hadn't been notified by the leaseholder or the tenant, but we had some flooding at the duplex, so we happened to have gone in for, to look at a repair and noticed the issue. A few hours later, when Surfco came back, it was determined that it was much more serious than we thought. Brandon had estimates that to demolish it would be twenty thousand. Estimated cost, and again, they are just estimated, because it's a first, you know, first pass-through estimate of seventeen thousand, but in language they use twenty to twenty-five, and it could go up from there. What do we do with properties? And so, we're looking for directions to find out whether or not we move forward with demolishing the one property, or both. And Brandon indicated that the best time to do this is also in the winter. And Brandon, do you have any other comments to add?
Pretty straightforward, just looking for some direction on what we're gonna do.
Yeah.
I think on the duplex, the lease ends at eight-thirty-one, which is Saturday. We don't renew that lease, because they didn't give us notification, they wanted to renew it anyway, and my conversation with the attorney, and then we're no longer in the rental business. It's gonna be the same dollars to fix it, and then the same dollars to demo it approximately.
And we have to demo it eventually.
And we don't have the headache of being landlords for the next how many years.
And I forgot to mention, the moral, we don't need to act on the eviction, they moved out.
And if I'm understanding, it's cheaper to demo both possibly at the same time?
Yeah, that's what I would recommend, is if the direction tonight, it sounds like it is, is to move forward with the demolition of both structures, then that would often be looking for direction to do the regulated ways, put the plans and specifications together for a quote package for both structures, bring that forward to the council for final approval, roll for quotes, quotes come back, the council sets the quotes like any other projects, and then the demo will proceed as we set for schedule. The one thing I will say we'll work on, kind of in parallel, will be any flood mitigation that we may or may not be able to get for either one of the structures, or something that's still kind of out there. that's still kind of out there. But I think if the direction is as we're demoing it, then give us the direction and we'll forward, demo, work on any funding opportunity that may be available. Long shots, I don't want to think that there is slam dunk to get any of that money. Work on that in parallel, then report back to the council with the plan specifications to go for, say, the demo.
Any questions for Nancy or Brandon on that? I entertain a motion to have Brandon pursue getting us some quotes on demolition of both properties.
I'll make that motion, second.
Thanks, Dwayne, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thanks, Brandon. Personnel, we had a resignation at the library, Phoebe the Cook has submitted her resignation. Letter was in your package, thanks to us for her time here, had a wonderful experience. I entertain a motion to accept her resignation.
Who to accept?
Thanks, Dwayne, a second.
I'll second.
Thanks, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank Phoebe for her services at City Casson Library, which are the best in our future. Attorney's report, we added the Dodge County Ice Arena Agreement, we had sent that back to them last meeting, and we got kind of a rebuttal, or a clarification of what was communicated earlier, I guess I would call it that, which makes sense.
I had two conversations with Mr. Elmquist, who is the county administrator today. The county is essentially giving us a counterproposal to that. They had drafted the Ice Arena Agreement. The agreement was that the city was going to be allowed to continue to use the arena during the fair. We would pay something for that to the county, to the fair board, for their inability to use that building during the fair. And I think the consideration for the city was, we could probably, with knowing that we've got the use of that ice time, we could probably earn enough to make that payment to the county worthwhile. And the county, the, some of the initial discussions with the county was ten thousand per year. If you recall, we had countered back to them at seventy-five hundred per year. My first conversation with Jim, they were going to counter back with something different. In my subsequent conversation, he did change that. The, what the county would like is eighty-five hundred dollars per year over the five years of the contract. So it's essentially five thousand dollars more over the course of a five-year contract.
What's what's different to the?
Did, did the Ice Arena or the management determine how much money we could make?
I never did hear back from him on that.
And this year's going to be the tough year to compare, because as we had the Ice Arena meetings back in June and July, leading up to the fair, negotiating this to not take the ice out.
There wasn't enough time.
There wasn't enough time this year to get, because they didn't know if they could have it, so they didn't have it all booked out.
I agree.
But in our conversations with Howie, he felt, yeah, we can recover what the cost would be each year if they know ahead of time it can get stuff scheduled.
Okay.
So that was my, from being in those meetings, that's kind of what was discussed there.
I did, I did leave a message for Steve today to just kind of follow up on that, but I did not hear back from him today.
I'd really like to know if it was.
We'll never know.
We'll never know, I know.
Yeah.
So.
The bottom line comes out that even if we don't rent a single minute of ice.
It costs us more to drain it.
By the time, yeah, by the time the opportunity that you're going to lose to have anything for weeks afterwards.
Yep.
Is what the, you just can't take the ice out on Tuesday night, period, it starts Wednesday, and put it back to the next Monday and start skating.
Right.
It's especially being July, August, the warmer it is outside, the, I mean, this is my absorbing information at these meetings, that you just don't put ice back in, it takes weeks to get it back in, and then you have it out, so, you know, eighty-five hundred dollars just to take it out, put it back in, man hours wise, for what we have to do or Steve has to do to put it back in.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the eighty-five hundred dollar offer for five years. Do I have a second?
I'll second that. Any other discussion?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Onto correspondence, any questions for correspondence for interim administrator? Okay, hearing on, entertaining a motion for adjournment.
Do you need a motion for calling a public hearing? They didn't make, I think, yes, I think so.
You should. Okay, back to new business number two, I'll make them, I will make a motion to request the calling of a public hearing.
I'll second that.
Take Dan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, Linda. Motion carries.
Thank you, Linda.
Motion for adjournment?
Please.
Thank you, second?
Second.